Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 12. In compliance with state law, city council special and regular meetings will be held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With this, the meeting is now called to order. And Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltis here.
Councilmember Porter here.
Councilmember Hartsock here.
Councilmember Hertahausen present.
Councilmember Simomo here.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith here.
Mayor Wagner here.
We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you, Krista. If you could all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. And hear me while I'm slow.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for that. Next is approval of the agenda, and I hear that we want to, Beth, was there an item that you wanted to change off of the consent agenda for discussion?
Yes, mayor, I was asking if we could move consent item C seven to new business item number two for discussion.
Do we have a second to do that?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move consent agenda item number C seven to a new business item. I believe that would go fall under new business item number three. Is that correct, Regan?
It can really be placed wherever council would like to.
Then let's put it as number two. That way we can have a number two. Okay. All those in favor of amending the consent agenda of the agenda, moving C seven from the consent agenda to new business item number two, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That amendment has been made. Is there any other changes to the agenda tonight? Regan, is there any changes?
No other changes, mayor.
Okay. All right, then, looking for approv- approval of the agenda with removal of consent agenda item number C seven, creating a new business item number two, taking new business item number two to number three. All those in favor of the amended agenda, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. We have no public communication tonight. So next is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate, and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Thank you, Joe. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty-two dot one seven A dot five 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 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall, and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. First up, Leroy. I have you as listed to speak. Please join us at the podium. Thank you for being here tonight, Leroy.
Join us at the podium?
Well, all of us.
Okay.
You're at the podium.
Leroy Stevenson, two, six, eight, three, eight, one hundred sixty-six place southeast Covington. Every place I've lived around the country, usually streetlights are not billed separately to the homeowner. Prior to Covington being a city, the Water District did billing and passed the money on to Puget Sound Energy. Now, for me, as an individual, it's five ninety-five, six times a year. They bill every two months. And that comes out to roughly thirty-five dollars and seventy cents. And according to the Water District, usually there's six, six homes, six to one streetlight, paying in to pay for that streetlight. And currently, there's two thousand two hundred and eight billings going out, or individuals who are being billed for streetlights. Now, I understand the Water District would not like, would like to not do this anymore. They don't want to do the pass-through. And I'm as a citizen of a city, and not previously unincorporated King County, I think the streetlights should be part of the city infrastructure, and at least be billed through the city, and at best be paid by the city and taken out of the budget elsewhere. I'm not sure of the total total cost. Haven't figured that out, how much is going through. But I can't think of any place I lived where I was billed for streetlights. And the only other thing was, you know, if a person put up their own area light, like if you're in a rural area, then you paid for it yourself because typically it was on your own property. And in my case, the streetlights really aren't that helpful because they're, they're not at the intersection where you need to see to turn into your particular street. They're just one halfway down the block and one another halfway down the block, and actually, if we didn't have them, it probably wouldn't make that much difference. The other question I have is rather disappointed to find out that the tree ordinance had been changed or revised. I remember from years ago, we worked quite, quite hard with Mr. Hart to get a tree ordinance step. Both respected private property, and also gave the, the city government some, some control over larger areas. At that time, it was one acre or less, basically, you were free to do what you thought necessary to do with your trees. And just observation, recently, I've seen the most trees seem to go down with new developments or city projects. So then that leaves the burden of maintaining trees to private homeowners who happen to have been here long enough to have trees and large trees. Some of mine are probably pushing a hundred feet tall. And those trees are a pain in the butt to take care of, not because you're taking so much care of the tree, but the stuff that falls off them continually goes into the streets, the yards, the cars. So I was, I was sorry to see the change there.
Thank you, Leroy. So anybody else in the audience wishing to address council at this time? So anybody online wishing to address council at this time, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, the public comment period is closed. We will have a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C six.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, C one through C six. All those in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The amended consent agenda has been approved. Move into new business item number one. Consider an appointment to the youth council. Does council wish to take action tonight?
No, 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 I'll move. I don't see the, oh.
So before us would be to appoint Kai Lee
Yeah.
to fill position number ten on the youth council with a term expiring May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to appoint Kai Lee to fill position number ten. Sean, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. You know, it's, it's interesting, done hundreds of these interviews now, and I always look for something that makes them unique. You know, and you hear teams throughout all of them, a lot. Kai is looking for more activities for youth or teens, that sort of thing. But what I thought was most striking about Kai's interview is that he is very thoughtful. He didn't immediately jump to an answer. He did take his time and was thinking about what he wanted to say and, and what he thought would best answer that question. So I was, I was struck by that. Most other students are very quick to respond, and I was impressed with his willingness to sit there and, and silence a little bit and just kind of contemplate it. So that shows some emotional intelligence. So anyway, thank you, Sean.
Jennifer, as I speak to your second.
Yeah, I think Kai would be a great fit for our youth council. He said multiple times he likes to help others. He enjoys working with others, and obviously is passionate about bringing some activities and opportunities for teams to connect with our community. And I was glad to see that he stuck around for our joint meeting, so you know, to see that very impressive presentation and meeting with them.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Beth?
One of the comments that was made was that it's hard for teens to often build a community together, and I felt like that was an interesting take on it. I mean, that's probably what they feel in their hearts, but trying to put the focus on teens and not just fun stuff to do, but building a community that they can relate to with each other, and I thought that was an interesting perspective that was great to the council.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Kai Lee to fill position number ten on the youth council with a term expiring May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Kai, to your position, and we will let you know tomorrow. Next up would be new business item number two, which was originally the consent agenda C seven. So this is proposed ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-one International Building Code and International Fire Code Updates and Amendments. And Regan is, Rob going to be, or Selena?
Yes, I think Selena and Robert, I, I think we're going to transfer Robert over a minute ten this.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll go ahead and get us kicked off. Just a really quick introduction on this topic. So tonight, where we've got before you the, I'm sorry. We've got amendments to Title fifteen of the Covington Municipal Code. These amendments are routine and necessary to meet the requirements of the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, and the International Fire Code, which were implemented in two thousand twenty-one. And so what happens in this process is that these international codes get adopted, then they get adopted at the state level in RCW nineteen twenty-seven, and then those are going to take effect March fifteenth of this month. And so what jurisdictions do is then we have our building and safety chapter, and in that is where all of these various titles to these international codes reside. A lot of it is adopted by reference. There's an entire collection of books that our building department accesses with all of those requirements in that. And then we adopt that through Title fifteen. Really, the one thing I wanted to point out, since we're, we're presenting this tonight, is that really from the, from the building and planning's perspective, the only notable addition that we are providing in this update is section fifteen twenty-five, which is to codify our current methodology for addressing. So we rely on the fire department, our friends at Puget Sound Regional Fire, to do our addressing for us, and that was a kind of a policy that we had, and then with that last contract update with, we codified that process, so then everyone's aligned. So other than that, we're just open to discussion and curious what the council would like to learn from us tonight about these updates. And I just want to say, Robert Myers, our building official, is on the call, and John Napier, our fire marshal, I believe, is also on the call. I'm looking for his name. I don't know if he's in the audience.
Yeah, he's on.
In the audience.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Can we move John over just in case we have questions?
I did promote him to panelist.
Okay, thank you. All right, who has, Beth?
Yes, thank you, Selena and, and Robert and Regan for entertaining this. I think one of the, one of the things that came up to my mind when I was reading through the document, and there's a lot there, and I'm going to just be the first to admit that I don't, you know, I want to make sure I'm following along properly. But one of the clauses on page fifty of our packet, it's section ten, I didn't bring the whole thing out, but it's talking about following sections of the IPMC being removed and not adopted, and some of them had to refer to things such as rodent harborage, motor vehicles, you know, rubbish and garbage, pest elimination, things of this nature. And I think one of the reasons it stood out to me is because we do get a lot of code. Residents are concerned about those types of things, and, and so we're just wondering if we adopt this, does that mean we're not, we are not, it would preclude us from adding any of these, or making our code maybe a little bit more stringent if needed at any time in the future? I think that's probably the biggest question. Are we, are we locked into exactly what the IPMC will say?
Well, yeah, oh, go, oh, go ahead. Did you want to take that, Robert?
I'll, I'll, I'll take it. Yeah, so when we adopt these codes, we're adopting this on top of our already nuisance codes, unfit buildings codes, kind of different enforcement tools, chapter one. And so when there's repeats, sometimes we want to delete or modify those sections, and, or eliminate them for other reasons, because like, you know, enforcing window screens and things like that. You know, it's just, it's a lot. We don't have a huge staff, so we don't want to get down in the weeds with that kind of stuff, so hopefully that, that one.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll, if I may, just add on top of what Robert described. So he's correct in the sense that when we look at these codes, they can do one of two things, right? They can complement, or maybe there's a conflict, and sometimes they can provide greater harbor for the codes that we already have. And so when we're talking about these ones that we have listed here, a lot of these really are either like super detailed building codes that we're, that we're just not wanting to get into the nuances of like, Robert said, the screening, things like that, that tend to also just be built into what developers do. The other piece of this is that property maintenance aspect where we're talking about grading and drainage. We have robust grading, dr- grading and drainage, right? Where we fall under the state of Washington. Ours are actually probably more restrictive than the international requirements. And then same with like ro- rodent harbage, you know, motor vehicles, our titles one through eighteen in our zoning code tend to touch on these already, and are actually more detailed to meet Covington's needs versus kind of that higher, broader written out at a broader level need.
Okay, so, so adopting this doesn't necessarily mean that we will lose control over what we need to do for our community.
No, and in, okay, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Beth. That's kind of the, the nuances of, of online. I wanted to just mention that the, the short answer to that is no, that won't prohibit us. And as we kind of start to explore our code and compliance regulations, things of that nature, when we start talking about Title eighteen and our nuisances and, and our, you know, our solid waste ordinances, things that we have really embedded in that health and safety provisions in Title eight. We can always come back and see if there's language in the international codes that we like, right, as we start to be ro- robust. But I really think, and it's my suggestion, that if we wanted to tighten those kind of more property level criteria, that we focus those within our actual municipal code, which would, are mostly in Title eight, some in zoning code and, and otherwise.
I'm done with questions.
I just want to reiterate, so by adopting this, because Title fifteen relates to the International Fire Code, we're taking items out that are duplicates of, so like the rubbish and trash and nuisance are already in Title eight, which allows us control already with that. So we're just taking out redundancies. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a question on this? I have one other question, Ben. So relating to Title fifteen dot twenty-five, relating to address, addressing and street naming. So back in two thousand five, all the businesses were re-addressed in the city of Covington. Every business got a new address. Is that what this is relating to? Again, we're going to be readdressing, or is this just tightening that information so our businesses don't have to put new addresses up again?
No, actually, this is just we, we never had this in our code before, so we're now modifying our practices now, so no one should have to change their address. You know, unless, you know, the neighborhood changes the addresses or something like that, you know, new development.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, then, before us is a ordinance to potentially approve an ordinance adopting the modifications to Title fifteen Covington Municipal Code Buildings and Construction with align the Covington Municipal Code with the two thousand twenty-one international codes, as well as with the proposed new downtown zone regulations.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I, I think the conversation really helped drive the decision to do this, and as long as we can continue to maintain the opportunity to keep our community the way our residents would like, then anything we can do to make it easier, and I appreciate the, the conversation and the opportunity to learn more.
Jennifer, as I speak to your second.
Just agreed, and thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve an ordinance adopting modifications to Title fifteen Covington Municipal Code Buildings and Construction, which align the Covington Municipal Code with the two thousand twenty-one international codes, as well as with the proposed new downtown zone regulations. All those in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. And Selena and Robert, thank you very much for providing more detail on this so that it makes it clear for everybody to understand. And Beth, thank you for having this poll to discuss. All right, thank you. Next is new business item number three. Consider an ordinance adding new chapters to Title three of the Covington Municipal Code to be known as Business and Occupation Tax, Chapter three dot nine five of the Covington Municipal Code, and Business and Occupation Tax Administrative Code, Chapter three dot nine six Covington Municipal Code. And this would be Casey.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So before you tonight, you have an updated ordinance for the Business and Occupation Tax as well as the Administrative Code. So during the, the study session that we had in February, you've shared some feedback with us, and I've put those edits into this new ordinance, and I'll walk through what's included, what I changed for you. So we've updated the rates that are included. We've put the point two percent across the board in all categories. We've also added language to exempt all city activities, so cities, city activities will be exempt. And we've also added language for exec, exempting specific nonprofits. And then we've also increased the minimum reporting threshold to two hundred and fifty thousand. And just as a side note, we also received kind of secondary review from our outside council and had made their recommended revisions. Most edits were super minor, but there was only one substantive substantive edit, which was to give the hearing examiner ninety days instead of twenty days to issue their decision. So I've made that change as well. Everything else remains exactly as you saw it during the study session. And then just to give you a little bit more information, you had asked to see some additional information on the thresholds. And so that is the next table that you can see. And then also, I believe, Regan handed out even more information. This is kind of summary information on the blue sheet, but this will give it to you by category. And the only thing that I'll mention on this spreadsheet that he gave to you is that when a business or when a category has less than three businesses reported, I have to remove it from the category and report it under services and other categories. So that's a Department of Revenue restriction that we have. So you'll notice that after businesses over a hundred thousand dollars, the manufacturing line will go from three, and then it'll go to zero, because if there's anything under three, I'm reporting it in that other category. So just so you know kind of how that works. But we've given you the threshold amounts all the way up to five hundred thousand. And two hundred and fifty thousand is what's currently included in the ordinance based on your direction from the study session. So we do have those. I can go over them with you if you have any questions, or we can talk about those. And then lastly, we also added some language for the exemption of the five oh one C three. So currently, the nonprofits are exempted from the B and O tax, with the exception of the nonprofit hospitals. And let me just back up and say the nonprofits are exempted except for retail sales. So that is all retail sales. If a nonprofit has any retail sales, they would still report on B and O. But with the high threshold we have, I don't really think that's going to be affecting anybody. But the language that we currently have in there will exempt all the five oh one C threes except for retail sales, except for hospitals as defined in RCW seventy point four one. And what that RCW, basically, the definition of hospitals in that RCW is anything with a, a twenty-four hour or more care. So basically, those are are, are hospitals. And just as a reminder, multi-care is a nonprofit, and U-Dub Medicine has both nonprofit and private components, just for a little bit more information there. And those were the only edits that we made to the ordinance that you saw during the study session. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I did want to bring one thing to attention I forgot to mention. When you're looking at the, the, the new thresholds that I had given you, if you look at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold and follow it over to the reduction in business filings, you'll see that it's forty-five business, businesses that have been reduced. I just wanted to point out when I gave my presentation on the PowerPoint in the study session, we had an error. We had forty-seven businesses reported, and it was really forty-five. So kudos to Debbie's eagle eye for, for catching that. So I just wanted to point that out. And that is all I have for this evening.
Right. So before we start, just the way the ordinance is written is this is using the threshold two hundred and fifty thousand. So what I'd like to do is first, let's do questions about this ordinance. And then we, once all those questions are answered, then we can go into the discussion of what, if we want to leave it at the two hundred and fifty thousand, or if we want to change the threshold. So first, let's do, if anybody has any questions on this ordinance, Jennifer.
Thank you for the definition of hospital. I'd like to go into the weeds a little bit more, because twenty-four hour care still in my mind leaves some, some openings for other types of care that may be provided on a twenty-four hour basis. I'm thinking, you know, behavioral health services, if we're looking at any kind of maybe shelter that may also be doing some add-on services, would those potentially be impacted and fall under the definition of a hospital?
So if, only if they're providing services here in Covington, so I'm not sure if we currently have anything.
I don't think we do, but obviously, as a council, our job is to look ahead, yeah.
Absolutely. So I was just looking at the the definition here, and if Mark has anything to jump in, feel free, because it's a lengthy definition here. It's facilities and services over a continuous period of twenty-four hours or more. I'm just looking here. Does not include nursing homes, does not include birthing centers, does not include psychiatric hospitals, or any institution intended for use in the diagnosis and care of those suffering from mental illness.
Okay, so then, for example, like memory care would fall under likely the nursing home?
It's also intellectual disability, compulsive orders, or abnormal mental conditions.
Okay.
So sounds like those would not be included in the, in the definition of a hospital.
Does it look like, like withdrawal treatment? And again, I know this does not currently exist, but given those public health numbers Regan sent out, it says. Clearly, more work is needed in that area.
Does not include anything that's considered a hotel, because like twenty-four hour care, but that's not care, but a similar place furnishing only food and lodging, a domicile care, does not include clinics or physicians' offices, offices where patients are not regularly kept as bed patients for twenty-four hours or more. And then it goes into the nursing homes, birthing centers, and, and things of that nature, and the psychiatric hospitals.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else have a question on this? Sean?
Thank you. Appreciate the update and the information on this. Want to go back and, I guess, just underline that the motivation for even considering this tax was to raise funding
Raise funding specifically for public safety, um, and I appreciate that we got into this point. Uh, yet I look at page uh ninety-six and it's the last whereas on there and it basically says. Essential level of community service has been determined that these funds should be dedicated for the purpose of public safety. Why isn't that shall be used for public safety, um, I think we need to tighten that. Cause that's basically what we went out to the business community to say is this will be dedicated to public safety, so I. At a minimum, I want to hear why we picked should. Uh, and I would definitely advocate that we change that to shall. Um, and then if there's, I looked in the definitions too and didn't see a definition for the term public safety, um, and I want to make sure that we're. All. Clear on what that. Term means, um, so if there's any. The information you can give to enlighten us on what that entails as well, I I'd appreciate it.
Uh, so um, in section four, there is a dedication clause and um. Since the city council hereby dedicates business and occupation tax collections to purposes related to public safety. As far as the shall.
But what page is that on?
Uh, I have just the ordinance in front of me, I'm not sure in the packet, it is the um.
We found it.
So we do have that, there is not a definition in there for public safety.
I I might, if I can add, I'm going to turn off my camera, cause Krista said my voice is a little spotty, so this might help. Public safety, the the assumption and like Casey said, we have not. Indicated uh what or or defined exactly what that is, but. But we we know it through what we budget for public safety already. So any line item that we budget for public safety, whether it be court prosecutor, public defense. Or our police contract is where these dollars would be spent, uh, if council wants to indicate that. Somehow in the ordinance or in the whereas clauses, we could do that. But those are the line items where in practice, the those monies are spent.
Yeah, I I, yeah, I appreciate that, um, just want to make sure that. Future councils or future city managers are clear. On what we decided, I mean, they could obviously change it if they wanted to, but I. Want to make sure there's as little ambiguity as possible on. What these funds were meant to be used for, um, so, um. I guess we can always amend in the future, but I I think just for the record, what what Reagan just mentioned was, as I understand it, the council's intent. That it would be spent for those current light items that Reagan just mentioned, um, in his response. Um, is there any conflict between a whereas and a section four? Um, if, and I think Mark raises, whereas this should. What do we go with if it says dedicates in section four?
I'm happy to jump in and answer that, the whereas recitals are simply going through and explaining the story and legislative intent here. Uh, the actual language that's being adopted by council is the section for dedication. The city council hereby dedicates business and occupation tax collections to purposes related to public safety, that's the operative word. And I think what it's saying in the recitals is that this is what we want it to. Be re be for, that the reason why the city council is considering passing this B and O tax. Is because it should all be for public safety and that that's why we want to pass this tax to begin with. Is to fund public safety related measures and the. Actual ordinance itself uh makes that clear, that is for purposes related to public safety. And as Reagan pointed out, there's a lot of ways we can that when you have the line items there. It all comes across for what is public safety and it makes sure that we are within. Uh, the authority of council and council could always tighten this in the future if they saw that funds were being spent on something. That they did not consider to be public safety.
Appreciate it.
And I will mention that these will become restricted funds, so I'll be obligated to be tracking those.
Great. Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions on this?
So I I know we've just talked about this and I know this is probably going to be beating a dead horse. But I just want to ask, section, section four dedication, the city council hereby dedicates business and occupation tax collections for the purposes related to public safety. When I think public safety, I think officers. I think. Good streetlights. I think movable, good roads, what are we talking about when we're saying public safety as an entirety? Are we talking? Officers only, are we talking SEPTED principles, or are we talking streetlights, or are all of those things included? Cause I know what I really think of when we're talking about this, I'm thinking officers and make and SEPTED. Because those things are too very important and getting SEPTED involved helps our officers a lot. Getting officers is helping to put faces to the people in this community. Of people who are here to make sure that the community is safe. I just want to know what we're talking about when we say public safety, because I know that I will not be. There is going to be a lot of questions about that when it is finally said and done, what does public safety actually mean?
Okay, Mark.
Um, just briefly to answer uh the concern there, Councilmember Simomo. Uh, council will still be in charge of dedicate of appropriating everything that is collected here through the budget process. So council will be making the decisions as to what constitutes public safety. And also deciding what they want to fund with these restricted collections. So it's going to be up to council to make sure that the that there's a, that it's being spent on public safety as. That's council's direction in the ordinance, so I think I I'm not sure if I answered your question there, but I think I did. But I'm happy to go into more detail if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor of May, I just want to ask, so I know I've said what I think public safety is, it would it be? Wrong if we kind of all kind of just stated here what we think would these funds should be used for and those principles, or is that? Something we should say for a budget meeting, cause I think we're all on the same page, but I think us saying it out loud. Lets the community know where we stand with this funding, because we are asking our business community to give us more money, basically.
So are you saying that you want it written into this, or you just? Our opinions are.
I think. I think what our opinions are so we can set a standard for future councils, that this is where. This money, why this money came to be and why we needed it, I think it's setting that standard, I don't think it needs to be written it down. But as long as we have it on record as saying this is where we believe, cause I believe it 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 goes into. Boots on the ground for our officers, I believe it goes into those SEPTED principles, if that means we fund a a small percentage of. Putting into building codes so that way we can help our businesses be proactive and and being safe.
Um, I think Reagan stated it earlier, it's for police, court, and Reagan, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest I could offer that uh definition of how we use public safety internally. And in our budget process for council, and then you can decide if that's. Uh, sufficient for how you'd like these funds to be spent if council adopts them. It is for our police contract, it is for our jail contract, our public defender, our public prosecutor. And for any programs or initiatives that our police officers run, like Joe mentioned, SEPTED, that would be one of them.
Okay.
Okay.
So does everybody agree with that? Then move what public safety is. Do we have a thumbs up?
Does mental health resources fall into that at all, anything emergent?
Only if it deals with Darren.
Okay.
Does he's police?
Okay. He's actually a separate. But he has his own dedicated funding.
Oh, he has his own dedicate, okay.
I I would say mental health funding does not come out of our public.
So is there a thumbs up with the explanation that we just gave, that's what we're looking for?
Okay.
Seven thumbs up, alright, thank you, Joe, Debbie.
Thank you, unrelated to that um topic, but question, if if we're calling this then designated. Or restricted funds, cause I I thought they were non-restricted, although we were going to use them for specified. Um, task, if they are restricted, does it get its own accounting? Um, GL coming in, that that income. Will show up on its own light item, so we we can track what's coming in and then we know how to budget.
It will have its own revenue line item.
Okay.
Um, it'll have four of them for the categories, and then um, because they're. I use restricted as an accounting term, but since they're designated to public safety, then basically I would add those. Departments together, for me, it's two departments and I would always make sure that we were at least spending to cover that, so. And if it ever was, we were bringing in more B and O, then I was spending enough, then that's when I have to bring it back to you and we'd be reserving it. So that it wasn't getting spent.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on that? Alright, so Beth.
Yeah, I just want to go back to the five ones C three thing, just to make sure I'm I'm clear in my head, so whatever threshold we pick. Would apply to any nonprofit five oh one C three unless they have retail, well, they'd have to be over the three hundred, whatever threshold. And we know for sure that we can. Put in a clause, and I know I, I'm just going to say this, so it's on the record that it won't apply to medical services, so the hospitals would be, even though. Five oh one C three, they would be not, they would not qualify for the exemption. And we we know that that's kind of a practice in a couple of cities already and there hasn't been an issue and there won't be a legal issue at some point.
I I will say I stole the language directly from the city of Olympia. Um, and no issues, and there's several cities that do it, uh, city of Tacoma, city of Olympia.
Can I jump in there Casey, um, to Beth's comment, I don't want to say that there will never be a legal challenge to that. Cause that's something we we don't know, there could be, but in practice right now, there's other cities doing it. And there's been no legal challenges and they're collecting the B and O.
And if. And w- once we start this. And we we set the parameters right now, the limits and that, we can't really revisit that, right, I mean, it's kind of. Or or once we start the tax, we just can't change the amount, but we, can we at any point? Change our categories and such, or are we kind of locked in?
Come back and revisit the categories and the thresholds.
We are allowed to do that.
Yep, uh, it probably, um, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, would it re-trigger a referendum process?
I believe it would only happen if we increase.
Going up, right, so if we're decreasing, cause right now we're currently at the the maximum amount, if we were to decrease, then we can always decrease, we can always change thresholds.
So if we did decrease the amount theoretically, we're raising it for some businesses that may have. Qualified for an exemption that no longer does.
If we lower the threshold, you mean?
And that would trigger a referendum?
No, I just want to make sure. I think he said no.
Threshold, that means people that might not have had to pay it, might have to pay it, you know what I mean?
Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, that's something I don't believe it would trigger the referendum clause, but at the same time, that's something we would evaluate. If chose to lower the threshold in the future to make sure that whichever way we went with, that we would be complying with the state law for. The referendum procedures.
Thank you.
Sorry, that, so that brings up another question about what you said, so if a five oh one C three is exempt from the B and O tax. Period. Why would changing the thresholds matter in relationship to the the nonprofits? Because you brought those into two in into the same discussion.
Oh, only if they had retail sales that went above that threshold.
Got it, thank you.
I'll mention that nobody in our city will have retail sales that will be over that.
I was just, I was just thinking it's perchance, oh yeah, sorry, Jim.
No, you're good.
I was just thinking that if perchance something was questioned in the future and we're talking about a hospital. And then we have to. Fiddle with numbers, that's kind of my business.
Okay. Alright, any other questions on that? So let's, so right now, then let's move into the discussion of threshold, the way the ordinance is written. Is that the threshold is set at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. That shows, looking at the big sheet of paper that was provided to us. That's looking at forty-six retail. Hundred and twenty-seven services for wholesales. Bringing in approximately using the current methodology from the state. Uh, one million seventy-six thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Does council wish to discuss changing that threshold, or are we comfortable leaving it at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark? Beth?
As I, as I recall during the conversation, and so maybe that's changed when we had our workshop, there is one major. Nonprofit that potentially would still then have to pay a B and O tax on part of their income. Storehouse being one of them, or food banks.
Five oh one C three though.
Okay, so that wouldn't matter. Okay, the exemptions are.
Yeah.
Unless retail sales, yeah.
Yeah, unless retail sales. Okay.
Okay, does council wish to keep it at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark? Okay, so then before us. Is the potential to pass an ordinance adding new chapters to Title three of the Covington Municipal Code. To be known as Business and Occupation Tax Chapter three point nine five. And Business and Occupation Tax Administrative Code Chapter three point nine six, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Absolutely, we've been talking about this for a really long um time, I really appreciate, I mean, going back to the Public Safety Committee, those of us that. Um, served on that, a huge thank you to. Um, you all for working diligently on that in collaboration with staff. In collaboration with our businesses, this was not. This is not something I think, you know, at least as an individual, but I likely. Uh, for the rest of our council members, it's not something we take lightly, hence all of the discussion and and picking apart definitions and. You know, uh, talk about restriction, and I mean, we've been talking about this. For a couple of years, and so um, I'm glad that we have finally come up with with something that. You know, uh, potentially tonight that we will all agree on, uh, path moving forward to support our city. And um, ensure that especially when Lake Point comes on board, that we are. Prepared and uh, this is a very proactive step to ensure public safety for many years to come.
Thank you, Jennifer, Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure, thank you, uh, this is not a light decision, I don't think it was easy for anyone, I just. Wanna reiterate that this took time, we went out to the public, we went out to the businesses, we. Educated everyone, we'd had public comment, we had, um. W- we did our due diligence and I I I think we did a good job, um, this isn't, it wasn't done on a whim, and it's not, and and. The the fact that they're um designated, not restricted funds. For the cause that they are designated for. I mean, we have, we have, th- this is why we're here, to make the difficult decisions like this, even though you may not like them. But I I think we are being responsible for our cities and for our businesses and for our residents, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak, Joe?
This is a discussion that's about two years old now. We have been, I think we have looked at numbers. So much that we we understand where everything's coming from, our police contract. Is raised so much since I first took uh took office ten years ago. This is. As much as I pride myself on saying I have voted for only one tax increase in my ten plus years on this council. This will be the second one I vote yes on. Public safety is needed in this community. And it is only appropriate that we find every way we can to do it and make it equitable amongst our residents and our businesses. And I think this is a step, I know there's going to be some businesses that do not like this, but I believe those businesses will. Come to realize that the officers that they need as well are going to be able to be paid for with this. I think that this is a responsible way for us to do this and we have taken our time. We have held open houses to discuss this with business, we went to the businesses themselves. We researched every way we could to not do this, and this was the best way we found to be able to find. The ability to get new officers. I'm going to vote yes for this and I hope King County starts finding new officers tomorrow, so we can get new officers on our streets. In two days. I know that won't happen, but I'd really like it.
Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion, Joe, I mean, um, Beth.
Alright.
Yeah, concurring with 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 what everybody said so far, and we know that looking at our pro forma for the next four or five years, it's going to. Become an, the deficit is going to get larger, and we know a lot of it is coming from, um. Our increasing cost for the contract, and that even this B and O won't cover the full difference, um. So I think what we're trying to do is, um, and our businesses have. So I think what we're trying to do is, um, and our businesses have said that. A lot of them would rather pay upfront for safety than have to pay higher insurance costs when they get broken into and when things aren't being controlled and. A lot of, a lot of what we're talking about here with public defender and prosecutor. It is a regional problem and yes, there are issues outside of our control, but what we are trying to do is do the best that we can within our city limits. Support our officers, our residents and our businesses, so that. We don't make this a friendly place criminals to come and take care of their business, so. Uh, I mean, an ounce of prevention can be worth a pound of cure and so we're hoping that this will. Be cheaper in the long run for our community. Um, and again, we did a lot of um, hitting the pavement, connecting with businesses, having open houses and so. It it's been two years that we've been working on this, trying to, trying to make a balanced decision, even though it's. It's always hard to make these types. A lot of work to put into it by everybody.
Thank you, Beth, anybody else?
Thank you. Well, I came in um, to this role just about the time that that um, task force had finished up, so I. I just would like to thank um, my fellow council members that were part of that and brought all of this to. Um, the forefront, um, thank our our staff for um, city staff for helping get all the numbers together. It it is a really difficult decision and it's one frankly, when I came into this role, I. One of my objectives was I didn't wanna see this happen. Um, we have some great businesses in our community. And I think what's important for everyone to understand is that this isn't just. For the short term, this isn't just so that we can hire one more officer, this is really to buffer up. Uh, what we've got coming at us over the next five, ten years and it's reserves that have been used and if we don't. Do this now, we will be in trouble coming down the road, so. Um, I will vote yes on it, um, because I believe that it's the right thing to do and I believe in. The public safety for not just our businesses, for our entire community and it's what will, uh, in the future, I hope attract. Further businesses to wanna come here.
Thank you. Um, I just want to add that. As a previous business owner, I always bought. The state and the county on B and O taxes because it was never dedicated to anything, it was always used for general purposes. And because it's always done on gross profits. But. Our council members, our pub- our Public Safety Committee did a lot of work, went out and talked to businesses. I would say that we probably talked to close to ninety nine, ninety five percent of all of our businesses and very few of them. Mo- all of them upfront said they were against being OTAC, but when they said. When we said that it was going to be dedicated to public safety, they all said they were for it. Costco, Multi Care, Fred Meyer, Segway, they all said they understood and they were all for it. The way this ord- the ordinance reads, that's this, going into this, the main ordinance. So not just with the little blue sheet that we read off, this ordinance is several pages long. And on the second page says now therefore the city council, the city of Covington, Washington. Do ordain as follows and under section four dedication. The city council hereby dedicates business and occupation tax collections. To purposes related to public safety and we all agreed upon. Off the definition of what we agree to public safety after our city manager Regan Bulley. Stated what our view is for the city. I will vote yes for this as well, for that condition only, that we are dedicating it to public safety. So with that, it's been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance adding new chapters to Title Three of the Covington Municipal Code. To be known as Business and Occupation Tax Chapter three point nine five and Business and Occupation Tax. Administrative Code Chapter three point nine six, all those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? This ordinance passes, thank you all very much, um, to each of our council members and to staff. Uh, Casey, your team, Regan, Mark, everybody that was involved in this and to all of our businesses in Covington. Who participated to all of our open houses and who listened as we walked around and talked. Thank you all, this is definitely a partnership. And as uh, Beth said, is to make it more uninviting for criminals and make it more pleasant for others to be here. I I'm just, I'm not forwarding, I can't remember exact words, but, so thank you. Uh, with that, that concludes our new business. Moving into future agenda items, um, our next council meeting, well, next week. We have the joint session with the Kent School District on Wednesday, March twentieth, our next council meeting will be on March twenty six. Does council have anything else they would like to see on a future agenda? Alright, then let's move into council staff comments, I'll start with Adam.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, today, uh. Two of us from Covington went up and assisted with security for a trooper dad's funeral today. Um, it was very much appreciated by State Patrol that we used our resources to assist them, uh, so that was a big benefit to them and, uh. You know, as as personally being involved, I, it was a moving ceremony. Uh, secondly, to Joe's comment about vacancies, King County currently has seventy six vacancies down from about a hundred and twenty. Uh, at the hot peak, so we're getting there, we still have a large number of people that are not deployable because they're in training. Um, so hopefully we will see some movement on uh, some of the officer vacancies we have in the near future. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Ethan?
Yeah, hi council, uh, nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Thanks Ethan, Dawn.
Thanks, Mayor and Council, I just have one thing, I just, um. I know that Regan mentioned recently that the uh, supplemental uh, transportation. Uh, budget was passed and we had an additional million dollars that was allocated to our five sixteen project. And so, um, as part of that, um, normally, you know, grant funds and things like that are needing to be accepted by. By council and I'm not sure if um, there will be. An additional separate letter or anything like that, uh, being, um. As this is being added to uh, the funding that we had previously uh, been allocated. So I just wanted to make sure, uh, just to dot all the i's and cross all the t's that council doesn't have any problem with accepting this additional million dollars from. The uh, uh legislature and I just wanted to make sure if that does come through and everything that, uh. We have that authority or whatever and Regan can, um, you know. Um, have that authority delegated to him if there is some document or something that we need to uh, sign to make that happen.
Counsel okay with that, thumbs up with that, unanimous, Dawn, thank you.
Thank you, I have nothing else tonight.
Thanks, Dawn, Selena.
Good evening, Council, nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Selena, Casey.
Thank you for that discussion, I'm kinda sweating and I gotta do the work, so. Um, thank you, appreciate it, we'll keep you updated on how it progresses.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Mark?
Uh, very briefly, I just wanted to let council know that. Uh, staff is monitoring the situation in Burien with a current lawsuit that's been filed by the King County Sheriff's Office. So that is not something that is passed by our notice and we will keep you informed with. With what results from that during every step of the way, so. If you have any questions, I'll likely be reaching out to you in the next couple of days with some more information on this if. And I'd be happy to talk about with, talk about this with anyone, um, in the future if you have any questions, so. Other than that, there's no executive session and I have no additional comment.
Great, thank you, Mark, Regan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, um, as you know, we uh, recently changed the language in the ballot uh, material. To more closely align with uh, council's intent. So we added language that in essence says that the the T B D sales tax will not be collected. Until the council uh, repeals the vehicle tap fee. Um, I know that's been the intent, those are conversations that we've had. But um, as we just changed that material recently, I wanted to confirm tonight with the council. That that is an acceptable uh, direction from the council.
Thumbs up, it's it is, yes, seven thumbs up.
Excellent, thank you. On on that, uh, we do have the the flyers printed, uh, we're working on putting rubber bands on them so they can be hung. On doorknobs, so when you're ready to uh, gather some of those, uh, just reach out to Krista. And she can give them to you in one batch or multiple uh, batches, uh, as as they're needed.
Great, thank you, Regan.
Right, thank you.
Krista?
I don't have anything to add tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer?
Ah, I have never gone first. Um, the weather is supposed to be amazing this weekend, so I'm sitting here thinking I should hit some houses with our updated lists, so. Um, I'll figure out a plan for that and get in touch with. Krista, um, I was just checking to make sure I have the district meeting on my calendar for next week when we were talking about it earlier, I was like. Oh, that is coming up, so, um, I do and um, I'm looking forward to Mayor's uh. Day of concern coming up at the end of March. And I didn't get to participate at the the last ones, so I'm excited, it's always, it's always fun, especially, I think I did sign up with. The mayor and that's a a fun partner to have, uh, people engage and, uh. It it's, it's a lot of fun to get out there and see how generous our community is, so, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Jennifer, Beth?
Um, so I just, I feel really um, encouraged by. The conversation that we have with our youth council this evening, I mean, such thoughtful individuals and it's, uh. You know, when you hear about all the negativity out there, this is really a group of folks that are trying to make a difference in our community and. Appreciate their candor and things that we may be able to take to the school district meeting next week, which I will hopefully can join virtually. If that's an option, because I will be out of town, I have that trip planned, but I'm looking forward to the. Union Gospel Mission tour tomorrow, um, so that'll be, that'll be interesting to see how that process uh, works, um, and what that might look like. We have that opportunity here, um, yeah, I I would love to do, um. Doorbelling, but we're doing a do- our Adopt a Street with Rotary this Saturday, so we'll be out there picking up trash with some of the other. The Maple Valley Seahawkers too, so. Um, I think that's probably about it for this week.
Thanks, Beth, Sean?
Um, I don't have really anything that was, uh, the RFA meeting was canceled last week, so. Um, don't have any report from there and, um, it's, my kids are home for college, so basically focusing on them. That's all we got.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah.
Christina?
You are mixing it up, I like it, it's the one time I was ready, um. First off, amazing meeting with the youth, I am so encouraged. They they are living in the time, in a very interesting time, whether it be post COVID and. Or public safety concerns, I mean, that that is, I don't know that I've ever heard the youth say that safety is a concern for them. And that heavily concerns me. So, uh, wonderful meeting, I'm so proud of them, I'm also excited about tomorrow's meeting, um, Beth, you're going and. So the three of us are going up to Union Gospel, I honestly didn't realize it was in Seattle, so I'm not too excited about going to Seattle, but I'm really excited about the tour. Um, Debbie, thank you so much for filling in for Skip for me. Um, if it's alright with you, I I'm happy and ready to come back. Um, starting this, I think it's this week or, no, don't be too excited. Um, so yeah, thank you for that, I appreciate all the effort. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm kind of excited about the walking list, like I had a really good time a few years ago. Just getting to know our residents one on one, um, I also. I also believe in this, I believe very strongly in what we are trying to accomplish. Um, I think it's, I don't think, I I know it's better, it's it's the better option for our residents and that's what drives this passion for me. Um, I want them to understand and know that and uh, for the city to benefit greatly. Uh, the, when you, when you said the proclamation on the B and O tax, man, I just felt this heavy weight, although I know. I know it's for the good, with a good purpose, there was just this weight and, um. Looking forward to hearing from our residents on that, um, also looking forward to the, I believe, sixty nine degrees that was forecasted, which is. Wildly insane, our weather in Washington is drunk, um, I mean, to, it was sunny in, at like ten AM and then at ten oh five, it was hailing. Severely today, so. I am very excited, especially since Tyler is now, um, doing soccer with with the city and so we'll be out there, if anybody's at CCP, come find me.
Nine AM, Saturday.
Nine AM, I actually don't know what time, but I'll, I'll be there, I'll, I'll be there. Thank you for an amazing meeting, guys, I'm, thank you to our staff. Consistently impressed.
Thanks, Christina, Debbie?
Thank you, regarding the weather, we we um, refer to it as the the app, the daily afternoon hailstorm. Cause it just happens like every afternoon, even though it was supposed to warm up, so we'll see about Saturday. I'm excited to be working with Beth and the Covington Rotary to do our street cleanup on Saturday. For the first time, I think we're gonna have decent weather, um, excited to do the tour tomorrow with U G M and to really get a. Better understanding of the role that they play in our communities, because I, um, Brian made it very clear that they would like to participate in this community as well. Um. Last week, uh, three of us uh, participated in the HOA annual meeting for Coho Creek. And um, there were a lot of things that were kind of uncovered in terms of traffic issues that they're seeing. And this is becoming kind of a common theme with other areas that, um, other neighborhoods that we talked to, but. I would like to thank, um, Officer Sisna for rapidly getting out and meeting with the HOA president. Um, looking at, um, doing another study when school is in session. Um, they know the times of day that they're gonna see the. Um, erratic driving behavior and and hopefully between the electric signs. And enforcement, they they can nip it in the bud and I. What I really appreciate is just out of that conversation with the HOA president and Officer Sisna. Got us away from the immediate, we need a speed bump. Um, because I think that's what we're hearing too, is a lot of, uh, the neighborhoods are wanting speed bumps before we really look at the. What's happening and looking at the data and looking at with a laser gun, you know, how fast the, an individual's really traveling, so, um. That's, that's it, uh, but I think we've got a number of cleanups on the horizon in the next month or two. Um, so our city will be nice and clean.
Thank you, Debbie, Joe?
So I'm now entering my fifth week of student teaching, I now teach four classes a day, cause. One of the classes is leadership and. I don't have to do much in that class, the students run that, well, like clockwork, um. Other than that, I am, uh, there is now a thirty seven minute video of me teaching that I had to send off for observation, so, uh. Anyone wants to see me crack jokes at myself and psychology, I'll, I'll show you a clip or two, but other than that. Um, I have pick tomorrow night. A few, just a few updates in there, nothing too too noteworthy, uh, although there is a spot always. To talk about levies and ballot measures in King County, so I will make sure to add the. Uh, are we calling this Prop one again for the ballot measure or what do we call, whatever?
Been decided yet.
Yeah, whatever.
Hasn't come to us to.
To be, to be named later ballot measure that we will be having in, uh, in August. So I will put that, make sure that they know and see what they can, if they can do anything for us in promoting it as well. I have RTC next week. One of the items on the. Agenda or briefing is Metro's approach to community engagement. Uh, I'm actually, I wanted to double check, as the vice chair, I get the agenda a little bit in advance. There's nothing there to tell me what Metro's approach to community engagement is for the briefing, so. I am very much looking forward to that because as someone who wants. More Metro in the area, I I think they're doing a terrible job of community engagement right now. And I would like to see them do better, so I'm looking forward to that, um, and I can tell you all about it. Because the meeting ends half an hour before the joint meeting with the school board, so I can tell you all about it. And I can even mention it to the school district themselves, so they can maybe reach out and.
Maybe reach out and get some extra uh, engagement from Metro. Fingers crossed that that actually could happen. I'm looking forward to the joint meeting next week with the school board. And I think I'm hopeful that we can have some good conversation going. We all know that there's some uh, some issues amongst themselves on the school board, so I'm hoping that we can help mitigate some of those issues and teach them. Uh, how to behave and enjoy each other's company and work together even when you disagree.
Thank you, Joe. A couple items again, mayor's day of concern is March thirtieth, the Saturday before Easter. Um, Krista had sent out a signup link. Uh, this last Sunday, I had the pleasure of helping dedicate the um. The new church, New Life Church on one eightieth uh, down the street from Crestwood, a beautiful new church. Uh, with that dedication, it's only been open four weeks. Uh, mayor's meetup, March nineteenth, so next Tuesday AM, um, Sean will be joining me and if somebody else wants to join, let me know. The next one will be April sixteenth in the evening here at Covington City Hall and then the following one will be May seventh. Um, either in City Hall or the uh, library. We haven't decided on that yet. Last Friday, I had the pleasure of attending the Communities and Schools of Kent fundraising breakfast. The goal was to raise sixty thousand dollars. After everything had come in, which normally takes several weeks. By nine AM, we'd already raised sixty-four thousand and there's still money coming in. That people sign up for afterwards, so that's one of the most successful communities and schools breakfast fundraiser and all that money. The communities and schools of five oh one C three, all that money goes directly to help mentoring kids, keeping them in school. Uh, I attended the Southeast Mayor's meeting today. And um, Janine, our, the CEO of Valley Medical was there. And their goal, there are several things brought up, but their main thing in Covington, they had things for Covington, Kent, Maple Valley and Renton. Covington, their goal is to continue expansion and development within their existing footprint and their land, cause they own. Quite a bit of land and the second floor of the facility over by Costco is still empty. And they are proposing to expand their cancer services, cause that is their number one um. Treatment that they do and they're expanding their cancer center and infusion center, uh, which is under construction in Renton. So that is going on and then we had a very lengthy discussion about the um. King County Sheriff, King County and what's going on in Burien, so more to come on that. And then just as a warning, if you see my car or my wife's car, it'll say student driver on the back. Um, Alyssa is learning and she's doing a much better job than I did when I learned, so.
So, so Jeff, since you already have the sticker, can I borrow it at the end of the month? Brian starts learning then too.
Yeah, yeah, I got three of them, but they're very, they're uh, magnets, so that they're not permanent bumper stickers. That is all I have. We'll move into our second comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments should be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Leroy, come on up.
Leroy Stevenson, two six eight three eight one sixty-six place Southeast Covington. I have a couple rough figures regarding streetlights. Yeah, if the city were to take over, the streetlight payment would be about seventy thousand dollars. And a guesstimate of the revenue from the water tax is half a million dollars. I don't know if uh, accounting has something better than that, so that's kind of a trade-off. As a single homeowner, my estimated. Water tax is gonna be about forty-eight dollars a year additional on my water bill. And uh, the other comment is that uh. On the B and O tax, obviously it's a pass-through. Every business is just gonna pass it on to the consumer. So the consumer is basically gonna have a little hidden sales tax boosted into everything they buy. And again, taxes are cumulative. I spoke with a lady from the city, lives in one of the senior housing. Places and they got a three hundred dollar rent increase uh, recently. And so these, these impacts add up no matter how beneficial um. The end revenue might be for people. Thank you.
Thank you, Leroy. Anybody else wishing to address council? Is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Seeing nobody raise their hand, this meeting is adjourned at eight fifteen. Thank you.